The planning board meeting, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll start with both calls. Brian Balcon.
Here.
Dan Bluestein.
Alden Clark.
Here.
Carlos Palmasano.
Here.
Danny Pennington.
Here.
The painter.
Here.
The painter. That happened.
Here.
So we probably will call on our associates related to both. They've played. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. One on one oh five State Street, the other on the proper shop. We'll start with one oh five State Street. So if opponents would like to adjust the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Lisa Mead, me and Tellemyn Cox, through your dream street, then you report. On behalf of the applicant, eight one oh five State Street LLC and Blake Ocox is here. He's the manager of that LLC. With me this evening is the architect on the project, who is Scott Brown. And the engineer on the project, who is Steve Sawyer from Millennium Engineering. The applicant proposes to renovate an existing non-conforming multifamily structure, which currently includes fourteen residential units. The proposal includes the removing of a portion of the rear of the structure in renovating the interior and exterior of the building, ending up with six units with sufficient parking for all of those units on site. Currently, the property includes unmarked paving in an area. On a good day, might get you ten parking spaces where eighteen are actually required. We're required to have nine spaces and we'll be providing twelve spaces on the site. Property is located in the R three zoning district in the downtown Norberley district. We've already been at historic commission for the recommendation. You all should have that in your file. The building itself was constructed in around eighteen fifty, according to the assessor's records, which, as you all know, is their favorite default. And it's actually eighteen oh eight, according to the Form B in the district data sheets. Based upon our research in the registered deeds, we can tell that TICOM constructed it properly around eighteen oh eight, given the reference to a building on the deed in that time period. The district data sheets have this building listed as contributory to the district. So, as I said, the current use of the property is a multifamily, non-conforming structure, which is now required to have a special permit in our R three zoning district. Nonconformities for the project, before I go through the historic maps. The lot area includes thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety-seven, excuse me, thirteen thousand nine hundred seventy-nine square feet, where the current use of fourteen units require sixty thousand square foot lot. The applicant proposed six units where twenty-eight thousand square feet would be required. A lot frontage is one hundred twenty feet required and the property includes seventy point forty-two feet. The height of the district is thirty-five and this building exists at thirty-nine. And the district requires at least forty percent open space and there currently is twenty-eight point four percent open space. So those are the all, all of the nonconformities currently existing. The applicant's proposing to take down thirty-six point seven percent of the rear of the exterior walls, which includes, as I mentioned before, one-story wood and brick sections in the rear. Importantly, a significant part of that thirty-six point seven percent comes from covering up portions of the rear of the building. We're putting the addition, you go to the next slide please. So before I get into the maps, though, we're required to give a special permit to the DOD, a special permit for nonconformities, as well as major site plan reviews. So those are the three things the board will be considering this evening. So just to give you a little bit of historical context here, this is the eighteen eighty-eight Sandborne map. If you look to the left of this map, you see High Street. So this property is one building in from High Street on State Street. So it's that red building right there, kind of in the middle of that lot, which is one lot of multiple residential buildings. We don't begin to do that anymore. But that's the building right there and that's the original form. Next slide please. So this is in eighteen ninety-four. We now have a lot created here, but there you can see there's a residential structure in the back, as well as a couple of weird appendages to the building in the back. Next slide please. In nineteen hundred, the residential structure in the back is gone, but you do still see that wood addition in the back and then that kind of shed addition sitting off to the side. Next please. Nineteen oh six, there's no change. Nineteen fourteen, that extra shed is gone in the rear. Looks like that addition might have got smaller, but you certainly can't take dimensions off this. Next slide please. And this is a nineteen twenty-four assessor's map. So you see here that we've got a new shed or something on the building on the lot and we still have that kind of wood appendage off the back. But the main form of the structure remains the same. Next slide please. And here we have today's GIS and my maps. And you can see the structure. I'll point out a couple of things here that we're going to see in some of the photos coming up. But the driveway currently goes all the way around the building. So you can pull in either the first or second drive, go in or out either one. And then the parking is kind of in that sea of asphalt in the rear of the building. You can see the one-story wood structure has got an asphalt roof in the back as well. And you can see that the building sits a little crooked on the lot. It's not exactly square with that sideline to the south. And the, when you're going to see one of the photos down the driveway, that wood addition on the back kind of sits out in an angle so you can kind of see it from the street. The proposed additions will be set inside the original structure. So you won't be able to really see it as you walk by State Street, given the narrow entry. Next slide please. So, as I said, the proposal is to improve the existing conditions of the property. And in this instance, replace on the existing structure, the main structure, replace all the vinyl replacement windows with six over six double hung simulated divided light windows. Selectively re-point the bricks with approved lime mortar that the planning board has approved in the past in the downtown Norberley district. The front gardens and granite posts to be rebuilt. And basically, the gardens overall to be redone. There will be a significantly more amount of outdoor resting space or terraces and green space that we've shown on our landscaping plan with the pocket gardens and terraces throughout the site. The addition you'll see in a minute is going to be subservient to the original structure. It is shorter and it has a different kind of cladding and the connection is different as well. And Scott will go over that. We believe it improves the overall structure and the condition of the structure. So it will last another hundred fifty, two hundred years, but doesn't alter any of the relevant historic aspects of the architectural features of the original structure. Next slide please. So here's a number of photos related to the neighborhood and the areas surrounding as well as the structure. So that brick structure right in the middle obviously is the structure we're talking about. And you can see how the front of this is no longer really well-kept or preserved to really show off in front of that building. Next slide please. This structure, this photo looks down that southerly driveway. You can see that one-story addition in the back. We're going to get closer in a minute. Kind of goes out in an angle to the south. You won't be able to see that with the new addition. Next slide please. So this is traveling down the sidewalk on the easterly side of State Street, traveling to the north. Just have to stop when I say traveling down the sidewalk to the north. In any event, that's what we do in the report. So there you can see this is traveling down sidewalk going in front of the building. You can see the building next door. Next please. And again, this is just a, an angle going into the driveway and trying to see around the corner. And you can see how narrow that building is on that site. Next slide please. And again, you can see that wood frame structure in the back that kind of juts out that you won't be able to see as you'll be able to tell in Scott's drawings in a minute. Next slide please. And this is the left side or the north side of the structure. The driveway goes back there and goes around to the back. Next. And this is the opposite side of State Street. Just so you can see what the buildings look like in the area. Number of multifamily buildings, a couple of one and twos, but mostly multifamily in this area. Next. And this is looking south on State Street across. So you can see what that row of buildings are. Obviously, there are a number of wood frame buildings here, but then we have this beautiful brick. Next slide please. And this is just a straight-on photo. I think that we're pretty excited about bringing this building back to life and restoring it. And I think Blake is looking forward to making that happen on this project. And with Scott's assistance here. Next slide please. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve to go over the existing site plan and the improvements he's proposed.
Good evening, Steve Sawyer, Millennium. So this is the existing conditions plan. As you can see, there's the structure with the additions off the rear. Most of the site is paved, mostly paved. There's some, there are some trees around the perimeter. I think we can just jump right to the next plan. As you can see, this is our demo on a lower ocean control. The area within, with the lighter red is all the pavement that's going to be removed throughout the, throughout the site. We'll be removing that and reconfiguring the proposed conditions. And then you can see in the hatched area, you can see the area of the additions that are going to be removed. And then working around the site, if we work around, I guess counterclockwise is coming in. The first, you'll see there's a tree, I think it's right at, off the back of one-ten high. There's a twenty-inch tree. We're going to, that other side, Andy, there we go, that one there. That one, the ones that are dark are going to remain. So it's a twenty-inch tree. There's an existing fence on our, our side of that tree. The property line is actually on the other side of the tree, but we're going to maintain the fence at that location. We are going to move the fence, going to remove a section of fence from, from that location to about thirty feet to the right because we need that room for, for parking. The tree, as we work towards the rear, there's a tree in poor health that's going to be removed. Then at the back corner, there's a tree in good shape, provides good canopy. That tree is to remain. And then as we work along, work along the back property line, I believe there's two doorways that we're moving and then a larger twelve-inch that has good canopy that we're going to maintain. And then there's some smaller trees along the rear that will all be removed and with a robust planting, robust planting plan, plant around the perimeter. So that's, that's about it for the, for the existing. There is actually, there is a dry well in the, in the rear that doesn't appear to be functioning. That drop will be removed and will be provided. Next slide please. As you can see with the proposed conditions, we're formalizing the parking quite a bit. We're closing off the entry, the circulation around the north side. It's going to be closed off with patios with one, one spot up on, up on State Street. And then on the other side will be the main entry. It's twelve-foot total width. I think we received a comment about trying to provide some pedestrian designation. So what we're going to do here, we really need the full twelve-foot width. But what we're going to do is we're going to provide nine feet of pavement and then three feet is going to be a brick paver flush with the pavement. So I think with this, it'll sort of direct the cars to be on the pavement and then pedestrians to walk on to separate, separate the car flow and the, and the pedestrian flow with this treatment. And so that flush treatment runs around the whole perimeter of the building, around the whole side and then along the rear. And so as we work in to the site, there's a parallel spot on the right. I think it's spot number, spot number eleven? Eleven. And then we have parallel spots as we work around the perimeter with the, yeah, perpendicular, I'm sorry, perpendicular spots as we work around the perimeter where cows can pull in forward and back out and then pull out forward onto, onto State Street. And as far as the trash, we have several, we have a small trash enclosures. I believe that what we're proposing is each unit will have their own designated area. So I think there's six of them around or one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight trash enclosures as we work around the property. So there's no centralized there to keep the, the activity to a minimum spread out for the property. It's just going to be the typical debris port recycle bin and one recycle bin and one trash bin for each unit. And as far as the grading, the grading right now, it's about split, about the front corner of the site. Grade flows off towards State Street. There is no stormwater attenuation, other than the fact there's a dry well in the rear that doesn't appear to be functioning. So what we're going to be doing is we're regrading slightly. Right now, everything flows off towards the north, the northeast corner, the, the site flow. And basically, it's unchecked and it's all pavement and roof for the back three quarters of this area. So what we'll be doing here is we're going to be providing two concrete infiltration leaching basins. The, yeah, so there's two basins. The front one will tie the new roof drainage, the new addition roof drainage into that, into that unit. There'll also be a grate there to pick up stormwater flow sheet flow across the, across the site. And then that one in the upper right, that's basically the receiving area of the rest of the parking lot. It's all stormwater is directed to that point where it would be intercepted and infiltrated into the, into the ground. As you know, I think most of us know that the ridge is great, is fabulous soil for underground infiltration. Very low, but large offset to groundwater and all gravel, so readily accepts stormwater, stormwater flow. And as far as fencing, we're leaving almost all of the fencing that, as it stands today intact, except for along spots seven through ten. We'll be shifting that fence slightly or a couple of feet to make room for those parking spaces. We're actually not, still not bringing it to the property line. I think it's still a couple of feet from the fence line to the property line, from the fence line to the property line. And the main reason for that is to provide a couple of feet behind one-ten for them to access and maintain that building. So the property line is, based on our findings, is really probably six inches off that building. But we're going to keep the fence at a location where they can have some access to the, around the back of that building. And then as you work away around the perimeter, it'll, just at the trash enclosure beyond spot number seven, it'll jog back in and then the fence line remains as is around the perimeter. Does not to minimize the impact any of others, even though the fence is in some areas, three or four feet into, into our property, the subject property. And I think that, that basically covers it. There's an existing water service that we will be reusing. We will be providing a new fire service. That'll be a four-inch ductile iron for fire suppression within the building. And then sewer, I believe it's been videoed. I think Blake had a video. It's in good shape, so we're just going to reuse the existing sewer so to minimize any impact and, and impact on State, on State Street and not, not required to get up a good place. And that'll cover the site. I think we'll pass it off on the architecture with Scott.
Thank you, Stephen. Scott Brown, the architect of the project.
I think the next slide is to landscaping now.
Okay. So we could just go to the architectural site plan, A zero point one. This, yeah, here we go. So this is our architectural site plan and it's showing most of the same information that Steve Soder is showing on his plans. The only thing that we're showing on this plan, which he is not showing, is the lighting of the property. And for the most part, all of the site lighting are going to be mush, low-level mushroom-type landscape lights, which really throw light down. We do have some light fixtures mounted on the building. We have got two new front light fixtures at, on the State Street side, which you'll see in the elevations in, in a minute, in a minute, on either side of that front door. We do have the main entrance to the building in the center. We do have a, a light fixture there, which is mounted underneath the canopy. And on the north side of the property, which is the downhill side, we do have three exterior light fixtures, you know, that are mounted on the building. And we do have three doors on that side, which you'll see in a minute, that'll need to be illuminated. We have provided cut sheets for all of these light fixtures. We've been very careful about making sure that, you know, the color temperature across these fixture selections all, you know, all matches. So the plan is to have a very sort of low-level lighting across the site. Next slide please. So our, these are our proposed floor plans. You know, we're proposing six units. They all are more or less the same square footage at about fifteen hundred square feet apiece. They are all three-bedroom units, although we fully expect one of those bedrooms to actually be sort of a flex space, more like a, a home office. The center of the building is where we have chose to put sort of our stair port and our elevator port. We are proposing a commercial elevator here. The plan is to have all of these units be accessible, although it's not requirement. We want all of these, you know, floors to, to be at the same level. There will be an elevator overrun at the roof level, which you'll see in a second. And, you know, there's quite a bit of cross slope to this site. I think it's a little bit more than three feet from the south side to the north side. So we're actually taking advantage of that, having, two of these units will have some finished space in the basement, which I like to sort of call kind of like a daylight basement, you know, where they have some, some windows up high and in the upper left-hand corner, you can see those sort of shaded areas indicating where we've got finished space for those two first-floor units in the basement. Next slide please. This is our proposed roof plan at the bottom here, planned south. You see where our elevator overrun is located. Just to the north of that, we're showing some mechanical units for, these are units for the second and third floor units, and we've been careful about placing them in the middle of the building and they're partially screened to the south by, you know, our elevator overrun. We are proposing to sort of move, remove two existing chimneys. They're chimneys, which I don't consider to be sort of, you know, important character-defining features. They are located towards the rear of the existing structure. But the two original, you know, chimneys, which are at the front of this structure, we are absolutely planning to keep because those are super important in terms of the, the look and historic character of this building. We are showing a, a flat roof on our addition. In the beginning, we did explore a number of different roof types back, but anything other than a flat roof added significant complexity to the project and really wasn't helpful in terms of the perception of the height of this building. Next slide please. So our next four slides are, you know, kind of proposed and existing elevations. At the top are the existing elevations, proposed elevations at the bottom. So this is the building as you would see it from, from State Street. And there's really not a lot that we're doing to the front facade, other than window replacement, which our plan is to replace the existing vinyl windows with a Marvin Elevate product, which we've used a lot. It's a clad wood double-hung window. So all of the windows will be replaced. We are planning on providing new shutters, although the last time I was on site, I do think that we have a fighting chance to kind of repair, you know, some of the existing shutters there, that, that are there. And, and for the most part, you know, other than sort of selective, you know, re-pointing the masonry, some trim replacement or repair, you know, we're really, again, we're really not doing a lot to this front facade. I did mention two new light fixtures on the either, you know, either side of the front door. Those are shown on this plan. We're also planning to relocate the existing kind of historic marker to the right side of the building between the first, second floor, because that is currently just to the right of the front door. And we think, you know, moving it a little right is sort of better location for it. And, you know, in the upper right-hand corner of that drawing in the bottom, you can begin to see what, you know, our overrun looks like from the front. You know, it's set way back. Next slide please. So this is our, you know, right side elevation or south elevation of the building. And this is your first, our first look at, you know, what the addition looks like. This is a building with, with some significant, you know, floor-to-floor heights. They're over eleven feet. And, you know, we really need to match those for accessibility. So because this existing building is so tall, you know, really sort of drives the height of our addition. And like, like in the front, this right side elevation of the original house, really not doing a lot of work, other than, you know, selective base and repair, repair, trim repair and window, window replacement. You know, as for our addition off to the right side there, we have taken a little bit of a different design approach. It is clad with, you know, fiber cement, clad with really just sort of separated from the original part, the structure. We are, however, matching the eve line, intending to match the details of the existing structure and also planning to sort of match window sizes and sizes and, you know, the six over six pattern of the windows. So those are sort of two common themes that run throughout the project. In the middle here, this is our main entrance. You know, that door leads to, you know, our stair port or elevator port. You know, for those of you that have seen some of the stuff that we've submitted, you know, originally to the historic commission, this sort of center of the building was something that we sort of struggled with, you know, architecturally. And, and we had a little back and forth with the historic commission. And, you know, after that meeting, we came up with this solution. And what we're showing in there in the middle is, is a different cladding and it's copper, copper cladding. And I think this is sort of a really far, far more successful approach than we initially started, started with. And just to the left of that, at the roof level, that's, you know, our elevator overrun there, you know, and planning to, proposing to, to make that sort of clad brick. So it sort of looks like a, a rather large chimney. Next slide please. So those are rear elevation, as you would see it from our, you know, our parking lot. Just to the right there, you know, may look a little unusual to some of you, but, you know, the right, this is an addition that is orthogonal. So what we're seeing there is an elevation that is drawn at an angle because the left side of our building, left side of our addition, you know, is parallel with our angled lot line on that side. Off to the left there, we do have two units, which have partially recessed balconies. And, you know, the previous elevation, you can see that they project out from the facade, I mean, perhaps two or three feet. We have had a bit of a challenge providing quality outdoor space for these, these units. So this is our solution for the, you know, the units at the second part of our addition. And then at the top, you can see in the center, there are mechanical equipment, which is sort of tucked away, you know, kind of in the middle of the roof. And just to the left of that, that's our, you know, elevator penthouse. And in the lower right-hand corner here, what we're seeing is a double-hung window, which is in an egress well. So we are planning on two of these units to have bedrooms in the basement. And so this is necessary to provide egress from that bedroom, which is at the back, back left corner of the bar. Next slide please. So our proposed left side elevation, right side elevation. And this is the side of the property that really sort of drops off with grades. So that sort of explains why we're seeing sort of a lot of exposed, you know, foundation, you know, with our addition. And again, this is the side, you know, where an addition is exactly orthogonal to the building in front. It's really at an angle parallel to our lot line. You know, and we're seeing off to the left there, those are the projected balconies, you know, for those two units, which I just spoke about. And in the center of the building here, we've got, you know, kind of three exit doors. So one door, which is in our, our field of copper cladding, is for our egress stair. And immediately to the right of that, those are doors that are at a mid-level. And, you know, immediately beyond those doors is a stair that leads to the basement and a stair that leads to the, to the first floor. So those two doors are, Glaze doors are for our first-floor units. And off to the right there, we've been careful about showing, we're thinking about where we're intending to place all of the electric meters. So we're actually showing that in this, this drawing. And just to the left of that, we have another egress well or bedroom in the. And just to the left of that, we have another, uh, egress well or bedroom in the, uh, basement of our front unit. And this is really the one, uh, in terms of the existing building, this is really the one facade we're making some, uh, significant alterations. And I think we're adding, uh, cutting about, looks, you know, five or six new openings through this facade. It's not something that we really want to do, but, um, unfortunately, all of these openings that we're cutting through are, uh, windows for bedrooms. So they are the only window in that bedroom. So it's somewhat of a necessary thing that we need to do. Um, but we're being careful about, um, uh, how we're doing it. And, uh, we're not necessarily replicating, um, you know, uh, like our, we're changing out our lintels. So there's some sort of recognition that, you know, these are not new openings and not necessarily part of, uh, the original structure. Next slide, please. So our landscaping plan and, um, which really goes to show sort of the healthy amount of, uh, landscaping we're providing across, uh, the entire property. And at the top, uh, there's some images of, um, some of the fence types that we are, um, are proposing for this project. Next slide, please. Okay. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Lisa Mead. Thank you.
Lisa, I think I went along.
I did. Yeah, there was probably an important item in the site that I did forget to talk about, and that's the wall. If you can jump back to the proposed one. Uh, the north side of the property, uh, if you zoom into the north here, there's an existing, uh, verse lock or it's segmental block wall. The rear part of it's in good shape, uh, in very good shape. But as you work your way towards state, it's bowing and in, in, in tough shape. And then as you get past that portion of the segmental block, it's steep slope with some, looks like there might've been an old granite block wall that's not really doing much of anything. So we are, uh, going to be removing a portion of that. You can see the, the stub of the existing, uh, verse lock wall, segmental block that's bowing. We're going to be removing that portion and then providing a new block wall. You can see in brown, we'll tie in at ninety degrees. Uh, it's easier to tie into the wall at ninety, come out and then turn ninety along the property line. Uh, so there will be, we, we got on site, really took a hard look at it. Uh, and this was our best solution to, uh, manage the, the grade that drops off at that, that end of the property. And along the, the new wall will be one of the, it will be the large block type where you can set a fence right on top of the wall, uh, the, the shade block. Definitely tie into that. And also where the existing block wall is going to remain, right now it's paved right to the wall, uh, which makes me nervous having a car right up against that, that block wall. We have pulled the pavement, uh, substantially away from that wall and provided landscaping, a landscape buffer along with a wood garden that's going to be set a, a couple of feet back from the face of that wall. So.
So as the board knows, the DOD, uh, the applicants required to be meet both the special permit criteria as well at the general special permit criteria, as well as the DOD, uh, special permit criteria. So I'll just run through the general special permit criteria. Uh, the first is, is that the use is listed on the table of use regulations. Here the multi-family use is listed in the R three district as by special permit, or in this instance, uh, it's pre-existing non-conforming. And we are making it less intense on the site than the current non-conforming use. Uh, the next is the request to use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. Here the multi-family use is prevalent throughout the R three district. In fact, it's the most dense district in town except for the smart growth district. Um, this area is in fact, many, uh, many of the buildings are multi-family housing. Uh, and the city council by allowing multi-family housing uses determine that it is desirable and certainly given location and adjacent to the downtown is convenient for the health and welfare of the city. Uh, the next number three is the request to use will not create undue traffic congestion or underly impair pedestrian safety. Currently there are fourteen units that require eighteen spaces, but there are about ten kind of spaces there. The proposed six units will require nine and we are proposing twelve. So we are meeting that requirement. Uh, there will be a reduction of the impact of the number of spaces required and the number of spaces provided will be formalized. Also, we submitted a traffic letter from linium. Given the reduction in units on site, the trips per day will go, will provide for less congestion. According to that traffic letter, the new, the new condition will average three trips per day in the morning and evening peak hours each, as opposed to the current configuration, which is seven and eight trips, um, in the AM and PM, um, at peak hours respectively. So there will be more than a half reduction in the amount of traffic coming in and out of the site. So, uh, we believe we meet that criteria. Uh, the fourth is the request to use will not overload the public water drainage or sewer system. Uh, certainly the reduction of units is going to have less use of water and sewer in the city. And as Steve has, um, reviewed, uh, we are now providing for appropriate stormwater retention on site as well. So we will not overload any of those public systems. Uh, the next is if there are any special regulations for the use, um, in this instance, there are none. The sixth item is that the request to use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Here there's no change in the use of the site. Um, it will be less tense, however. Um, it's continually to be entirely consistent with the R three district. As I said, there are multi-family district, uh, buildings around as well as a few single and two family homes. And therefore it's consistent, will not be detrimental to the character of the district. Uh, the seventh is the request to use will not by its addition to a neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character. Here again, it's a multi-family use, it's consistent with the R three district. It will not be in excess of that, there won't be in excess of that use nor will it be detrimental to the neighborhood. And again, we are reducing the intensity use on site. Uh, the eighth is the proposed use is in harmony in the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Here the use is not changing, but in any event, it fits squarely within the purpose of the R three zoning district. Uh, the DOD requirements go to structures and not uses, and therefore the structure will be addressed as part of the DOD criteria. And finally, the proposed use will not be conducted in a manner so as to admit dangerous, obnoxious, or injurious or objectionable conditions. And here the use as a multi-family will not be conducted in a manner to violate any of those conditions. Then we go to the DOD criteria. Um, here the DOD criteria requires that know, uh, that new construction and alterations must be compatible with existing historic buildings and structures within the DOD. And then it goes on to some more details, which I'm going to review in context with facts. Uh, here we propose to remove the rear later added stairwells and one-story wood and smaller brick sections, the rear of the property. In their place, um, we're proposing to construct a three-story addition. Uh, while larger than the current addition, the new work, uh, the current additions, the new works provide an architectural balance to the rear of the structure, as Scott has pointed out. Uh, the addition is surging to the main structure, uh, both by shorter in height and in width on the flat roof and does not protrude against the original structure, and certainly not, um, from High Street. The addition doesn't interfere with the existing roof line of the main structure, structure as well. And we're using different materials so you can see the difference between the new and the old. The finishes of the addition, um, as Scott noted, will be paint of cementatious clavber, um, clavber. And, uh, the seen copper colored metal panel system, uh, for the intersection between the two will also set off the new from the old. Uh, we've talked about the windows being replaced with appropriate windows. We've talked about the, uh, repointing and use of appropriate lime mortar. Um, and importantly, and, um, I think that the, the improvement to the front gardens and the granite posts kind of restore the appearance of that front entry of that building. Um, as a result, we think that all of this lets us be inconsistent, consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards. Um, the proposal also, um, as to it being appropriate for the setting, um, it is barely visible from State Street. The addition is barely visible from State Street. Obviously, the renovations to the, um, existing building are appropriate, um, for the setting. Um, one would need to stop and look up the driveway and to the left, kind of, in order to see that rear addition. It's really, doesn't protrude at all on the main setting of the structure. Um, additionally, we're improving the setting by eliminating that driveway that goes all the way around and trying to get into one parking space and including the terraces and the outdoor patio area and more vegetation or whatever. Uh, based upon that, we believe that the board can find that the, um, the new construction and alteration is compatible with the DOD, the size, scale, height, massing of the existing structure. Um, and that it is appropriate for the setting, the building and the area in which it's located. Excellent. Uh, the next, uh, permit the board needs to decide is special permit for non-conformities. I know this isn't what you usually do, but you get it every once in a while. So there are two criteria the board needs to decide under section nine. One is, um, whether or not there's any intensification or extension of the existing non-conformity. And the second criteria is whether or not proposed change will be, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Here is review, um, we are improving and or eliminating, um, the existing non-conformities. So lot area is thirteen thousand nine hundred seventy-nine square feet, where the fourteen units would require sixty and the six units require twenty-eight. So we are reducing the intensity of that non-conformity. The frontage of a hundred twenty feet and the, uh, the, uh, existing condition is seventy point forty-two. That doesn't change, and you go to the next. Uh, the required height for the district also doesn't change, it's thirty-five feet, the building's thirty-nine, we're not changing that. Uh, the district requires at least forty percent open space, the current condition is twenty-eight point four percent. This non-conformity is being improved to thirty-four point one percent. So we're getting closer, we have more open space on the lot. And the parking non-conforming likewise is being improved, um, from eighteen parking spaces, uh, where ten were provided. And we are now complying, uh, with the ordinance, and so therefore that will no longer be non-conforming. So therefore the board can find that there's no extension or intensification of the existing non-conformity. The next is that the board needs to find that the change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Again, we've eliminated two of the non-conformities, improved on another. Uh, and the intensity of the lot area is also being reduced. Um, the intensity of the non-conforming lot area is being reduced. Uh, we believe that the changes are consistent with the neighborhood as I've described before. And all the changes are primarily taking place in the rear of the building. And the modifications we believe that the board can find will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, particularly where substantially means to a greater or significant extent. And we'd request the board approve that, um, special permit for non-conformities. You have the next slide. So then we have to go through the major site plan review criteria. Um, under section fifteen G of the ordinance, um, there are a number of criteria that I'll go through briefly. Um, mostly you've seen them on the plans since Scott and Steve have pointed them out. Uh, first goes to community character. Here the property is located in the downtown R three district. It's an existing historic structure which will remain with modifications proposed, including the addition. The use of the property will remain the same, although not as intense. The site is being improved to be consistent with the standards of the historic downtown and certainly the buildings that have been improved in this immediate area. Uh, one, the next one is traffic parking and public access. Again, uh, traffic, um, impacts or access thereof are being, uh, reduced. As noted previously, the project will have a reduced, uh, traffic on the surrounding roads. Uh, the site contains sufficient parking, under the ordinance, um, and twelve parking spaces are being provided. Uh, with the changes to the site, also the pedestrian access or drive into the driveway, there's a better pedestrian flow of access into the, um, into the middle of the building where the main entrance is. Um, and that will be improved as well. And obviously downtown has plenty of sidewalks for people to, um, have pedestrian access to, um, areas in the downtown. Uh, the project will have no negative effect on public health, safety. Uh, public services and utilities, the impact on those will both be, um, reduced. And there's public water and sewer provided in the site, as I said. As far as land use planning is concerned, the proposal is to rehabilitate an existing important historic building in the downtown, which is consistent with land use planning in the R three and the DOD districts. And as far as the open space environmental protection, the proposal improves the non-conforming open space in the property, improves all of the landscaping, takes out invasive species. And, um, and the plantings will be appropriate, um, for the area and the region. Uh, the proposal meets the Kamala stormwater policy as indicated by your peer review who's already submitted comments that the project meets all of his requirements. And it improves, as I said, the landscaping of the property. And finally, uh, under major site plan review, our performance standards. Uh, again, the pedestrian vehicular access, traffic impacts are all improved on with this proposal. Uh, the site plan and architectural design has been addressed, so is to address the design elements divided, uh, identified in the ordinance. And as noted before, um, and they're all consistent with and complementary to the historic downtown in this area of New York. Uh, lighting, uh, lighting is shown in the plan that Scott, uh, went over. It's non-still over lighting, all low level ground mounted lighting and or low level down lighting on the building, only to the extent that are needed, uh, for building code and or public safety. And we've provided the cut sheets. Uh, the landscaping, we have a very robust landscaping plan that has been, uh, provided as well. We believe we meet your requirements on that. Um, certainly the reduction in the amount of asphalt, um, I think is important. Uh, stormwater runoff complies now with the new board stormwater requirements, um, as confirmed by the peer review engineer. Uh, we don't impact, have a negative impact on groundwater quality. There are no weapons on or near the property. We're showing, uh, erosion control measures. Uh, we meet all of the environmental performance standards, no explosives, hazards, radioactivity, smoke, air pollution, things of that nature. And all the utilities are provided on site. With that, we'd also request the board approve, uh, the major site plan review and are happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Well, prior to opening up for, um, public comment, I'll ask the board if they have any questions about the presentation.
Thank you. A question. In looking at the landscaping. And on the north side, there are two photographs, examples, um, of what's going on. And I just wanted to clarify what is being intended here. There's a, one of the photographs is of a wooden privacy fence. There's the, uh, well, it's heading toward the middle of the, of the patio area. And the other one is called privacy screening and not really clear exactly what that is. Pointing toward the parking area, I just want to get a sense of, and then there's a label that says solid wooden privacy fence provide visual screening, which implies that fences on the right hand side is also going to be intense. I just want to get a sense of what is being proposed with the northern thing from, uh, the State Street back to the, uh, the back of the existing building or district.
So I'm gonna, um, do you have that?
Okay. Okay. Uh, yeah. So correct me if I, yep. But I believe the intention here is that there'd be a wooden, the wooden fence would be along, it's a wooden four foot, at least four foot with that topper. So five foot height, uh, and that would be running along the property line. And then I believe in front of that would be the, the, there'd be additional privacy screening, uh, vegetation to green it up. And that fence, the, the privacy fence would run right, or would run on top of, on top of the new block wall, uh, which they can, you can core and set, uh, foundations in the verse lock wall. So that privacy fence would run all the way along to the end of that wall. And then at the rear of the property, they'd go to a metal, I believe a metal picket fence on the, uh, uh, along the parking lot.
So, so the, um, how, how high is the block wall?
The block wall from, it ranges from three, the, the very highest is about almost five feet from the, uh, gravel, I believe there's a park, a gravel park down below.
We, and I'm just trying to clarify what this is going to, so you said it's a five-foot wooden fence on top of a five-foot.
A four-foot, I believe it's four foot with a, with a one-foot topper, I believe.
And you go to the architectural site and I'm sorry. We call that out a height because I, I want.
It's a, yeah, it says new six-foot fence.
So I, I wanted a four-foot fence from State Street to about where the building starts to more for traffic exiting or people exiting. You know, people walking through or driving, backing out. And it jumps to a six-foot fence in the corner of the building to plan east. And we do that for privacy between state, one oh five state and. And we do that for privacy between state, one oh five state and So so just to clarify, you're intending a four-foot above grade? Yes. Well, there are dollars. The block wall is actually below. Okay, so there's no higher than four feet of No, there's a significant height difference between one oh three state between there and one oh five. There's a three to four to five foot grade difference between there. The block wall is actually going to be lower. The fence will be accurate by state. It's a four-foot fence from the State Street to the corner of the building. Six feet from the corner, you can play the eastward almost to the edge of the building to provide privacy. And just to clarify, the corner of the building is actually the same thing as the back? Yes.
Sorry, could you just provide your name for?
Way Bullock, ten Harrison Street.
Any other questions?
Well, one of the, in the city comment, they raised a question about the ADA compliance, I believe. Was there was there an issue with that? Because it doesn't seem to me there is, it was Dennis Morrell. Put a comment about it must fully comply. So what about?
Yeah, they don't, it was a problem. Just noting, so, well, my comment, if you will.
Yeah, it seemed it seemed like there were compliance.
Wait a second.
I have a question about the sidewalk on, I guess, the south side. You mentioned, I think you mentioned that it's going to be flush mounted, and it's going to go, and it's going to delineate where you can walk, where you can drive. The question is, is there a a strip or anything that would alert a tire? Whether it's approaching on the sidewalk, is it going to be truly just visual only, just?
It'll be visual only, visual only. You know, I guess you could, I I don't know, you could provide a lip, but I don't want to create any trip hazard, you know, this trip hazard there, and we really need the twelve-foot. And we should, nine feet with, nine feet with a curve.
So you want to use it, we need to use it.
Yeah.
Okay. One, one quick question, is is the twelve feet driven by fire department access?
No, I think good engineering practice.
Yeah. Well, I guess the concern is expressed as the, you know, there's no real separation between vehicles and that brick wall, which I assume is three feet wide, is the accessible route to the front door of the building of the cycle. And the curve contact tree is twelve feet wide. If I'm coming up State Street and I'm making a left-hand turn, I would conceivably be right on it. We're supposedly pedestrians. That's that's what's driving the question about, would there be any notification for vehicles that that offers some protection for pedestrians?
I think visually, I know visually, if you're driving, you you see a brick, a brick sidewalk, and visually pavement, you're going to drive the pavement.
Well, I'm driving over a brick sidewalk to 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 get to the asphalt.
Yeah.
I think we also have to take it in context. Right, this is a six-unit building. We're we're not talking about the middle of downtown, where there's going to be a lot of people going back and and forth here, right?
Understand that.
So
But that's why simple things like a change in in texture, a slight change in elevation may may help to mitigate this in the context of
Well, I would be concerned, I would be concerned about the change in elevation for accessibility, right? And also then maintenance, so perhaps
Accessibility requires three feet of width. If you've got a limitation there, it's like, they couldn't, you couldn't reduce that three feet of width to create some kind of a texture or change in elevation of effect. We're just asking, is, have you thought through all of the protections for pedestrians?
Yeah, I I think given, as Lisa mentioned, this, as far as use here, it's six units. And I feel this, you know, what we provided is probably better than what most smaller type developments or for that matter, commercial areas, we have a parking lot for people just walking across parking lots. But this is a different application. But I I feel, given the constraints on site, this is the best solution. You know, best solution for this. You know, I don't, and I guess I could, I could think about, okay, if you wanted to provide a small lip on, you know, at that, between the pavement and the brick. But at some point, you know, typically, you know, it's either to the zero or you go to four inches because of trip.
Or they actually make them. It's like a little thin granite strip, it's what they use to keep all the other bricks together if you were going with sidewalks. So there is ways to change. I wouldn't put a lip on it necessarily, because that just introduces a bunch of things, and bobblehead it and
Yeah. I, yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, aesthetically, or a five-inch, a five-inch granite flush granite between the pavement and the brick would be one way to to provide more.
And they even make them thinner. They make them, it's like two inches you can get, it's like a
It doesn't stick around, it's just, just
Yeah, it's just
For two minutes.
Yeah, it's visual, so someone knows I'm on the sidewalk, and if I'm driving, no, that's, I can see the brick, but I can see it. You can stripe it, you know, there's other things you can, like I saw.
I think I, I, yeah, I'd say versus striping, I think aesthetically, that a brick band, I mean, a granite granite edge would be a lot better, a lot nicer application, yeah. Which I I think that we could adjust that.
I mean, we're making progress. Yeah. Keep in mind, the plan that we saw a couple of weeks ago had no brick. It was all asphalt. There was no pathway for pedestrians to get to the front door. So we're making progress. But I I think the idea of of a visual separation of like a granite strip, I think would I understand the limitations on dimension there, but I think you gotta do everything you possibly can.
So we would take that as an added condition to show on the plan prior to
Yeah, I would just ask for clarification, both of you, on the application, so we're on the same page. Is the application that's around the entire brick that's shown here around the back as well?
So flush, if it's flush, I would do the grid.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we?
Just one question, you've gone to great lengths to show all of the equipment where it's located, the exhaust for the fireplace, is there any other types of venting or things that you would anticipate and ensuring the siding, either on the new building or existing building that would do all? Yeah. Yes, we're doing, right now, we're mostly electric. Like water heaters as well. So there would be no venting for hot water systems, and then dryers to and just put these I don't want to put in the bricks, I don't want to put in that, if possible, because we have to show as much as we can. Just want to go back to the maybe focus in this upper of the corner, where the parking space and other floor. And I guess I'm concerned about two things. And recognizing that you have two spaces for units, that's more than you need in your zone. The two things I'm concerned about are one, a contextual, which is, I don't think there's another place, this is more like a residential location with a parking lot, or somebody backs out into the street. And I'm not sure we have anything like this, it's maybe, we may, it just seems very unusual. Historic area to have parking space, yeah, so from a, from a functional and from a, from a function, safety just kind of the context. Sure about it, and the other thing is still thinking about that fence, that fence, if you had that that parking space, it seems like four feet is is too high. Yeah, I wouldn't want to have anything probably higher than three. If if we kept that part, just to, just to raise that issue whether it's possible to not have that parking space, because it introduces something onto the street that I don't think is typical of New York.
So a couple of things. One, we're eliminating that driveway, obviously. The main entrance for that unit is is over on that side. And so it would be not good to have, the person have to walk all the way around the building. Two, ninety-seven, ninety-nine, State Street, you back out. And the, I I don't think there's an objection to lower the fence or to stop it sooner on the edge there, right, Blake, so there wouldn't be any interference with somebody blocking, uh, blocking out. So I don't have an issue with that at all, to stop it sooner or lower it, one of the two. But we really can't lose that.
So is the front door for the front unit, is on the north side of the building, not not on the front of the building?
It's
The front door for the, the front unit, the the west side of the building, if we go one more slide.
The west, it's the front of the building.
Yeah.
The front door is the front, that's the entrance to that unit, right there.
They also have another door that's on the left.
That the rips common, and I was parking in that spot, I would walk it out to the public, walk and go in the front door. The other door is
Correct.
So I I I would agree with Mr. Danger on the parking space. I think, number one, it's a little unusual along State Street. I understand there are places where cars do exist in this section of State Street. But again, thinking about pedestrians, if I'm backing out of that space, I can't see pedestrians coming on the sidewalk. So that's gate screening. Everything that you're doing to screen that parking space view, screens the view of the the car from pedestrian on the sidewalk. It's not, I agree.
So we can lower, we can delete the fence and and accomplish the screening with low vegetation, right? So, you know, I'm going to say the wrong thing, because I'm not a landscaper. I know you're surprised at that, but like the boxwood or something else along there that would stay low and that, but it would still screen the parking space watering up the street. So we really would like to keep that parking space for that unit. But we're happy to have a condition relative to stopping the fence earlier and keeping vegetation low in that area at two to three feet.
Just for the heck of it, is there anything you could do relative to the paving for that parking area to make it feel a little bit more like the brick terrace, the brick sidewalk?
So what do you have? Is that, it's the term, that's right, we can, we can make it we can put it
Um, I have, since since we're on the subject of equipment and fence, I guess I'll last one question. The the heat pump unit, so you got, you have the four units for the upper level. And there are two units, one on the north side and one on the south side of the building, but back to my concerns about pedestrians and access to the front door. The heat pump unit on the south side is something you would walk past on your way to the front door on a three-foot sidewalk. My question is, number one, could you put those three units up on the roof, feed the ground floor from there? Or number two, could you take that unit on the south side and put it on the back of the building, facing the parking lot? Use that unit for the back floor unit and flip the front unit heat pump to the north side of the building?
You're you're trying to achieve
Blake, you gotta
Trying to get the heat pump off the south side.
We can find it. We can put it
North side, can you put them on the roof?
Well, we are limited, we are limited to a certain maximum run. Drivering, I don't know, might be pushing it?
It's pushing it, I don't
Might be. I'll commit to getting it off the south side. We're trying to do east or
I would say, if you can put one on the north side, one on the east side, and eliminate the south side.
Yeah, so the one on the north side, that's fully in the, that's not meant to be a walkway. It's meant to not have people walking on the north side, pulling around and keeping it
Like terrorists. So if you got a unit there, the front unit on their terrace, then it's a problem to deal with. And then the back unit is to be on the back wall facing the parking.
So the back end, I'll keep showing now, which is on that piece along that I think we show on on the east face.
Will they both be on the north side?
So maybe just to be sure that they can do it, and we don't consider this kind of a modification. If we could just say that there won't be a heat pump on the south side of the building, so they can do the study that they need to do to make sure they get it where they need to get it, instead of locating it today.
And while we're dealing with all of these things, I'll ask one last question before public comment related to trash. Since everything is now distributed, unit has their own enclosure, how does trash get picked up?
So I I want to address just two things, because it reminds me that we did submit three letters of support to the board there in the, from the abutters. And we had these, as you know, in our original plan, all together in a big location. It was the request the abutters to make them smaller and separate them around the site. I believe they're going to take them out to the street, but yeah, just like everybody else.
Okay.
I mean, I think I'm, I think it's a good solution.
Yeah.
To get them around the site, I'm just curious what happens.
Yeah. Take it off the street.
One day or Tuesday. Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment now. If you have a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments to about ten minutes, if you can. So if anyone has a question or a comment, please take them.
Hey, Rigga, one oh six B High Street, we are abutters. We are on the backside, if you will, facing the business side of the building currently. I'm a big fan of this project. It's going to greatly clean up the sludge that has been there for many years. It's really a great design, it simplifies everything. I'm not generally a fan of ongoing approval of non-conformities. That's something that sticks in my craw, but in this case, they actually alleviate and mitigate it because of the reduction in the number of units in density. So, you know, I think it's an improvement overall, you know, for the community and certainly his neighbors. I'm all in.
Hi, Donna DeAngelo, so I live at one oh six A High Street, so I'm Pete's neighbor. And I want to just reiterate my support of the project as well. I don't know if this is helpful to you in your discussion about sidewalks. But our house faces High Street, and as you know, there is we have a driveway next to the building that goes from High Street down into where our parking lot is. And we have that runs parallel to that driveway that we all use to get in the side door. And we've been there for five years. We haven't had any issue whatsoever. I don't know. Um, I don't know how wide that driveway is, but I don't think it's more than twelve feet. And, um, it's worked. So just want you to know.
Shilla Smuck, yourself, three Hancock Street. Um, I am also in support of this project. And I just, I really felt I needed to say something about the sidewalk and the brick and the granite and the this, that, and the other thing. Um, if the concern is driving into the driveway from State Street, you're you're crossing a brick sidewalk. And I don't, I just don't know how many drivers are gonna look down and see the separation of a granite against the brick versus the asphalt. Um, where to drive with that's the concern. So just felt everybody had to say that. And I do think like a a strip that were too protrudes in any way is gonna be more of a safety hazard. Having navigated all the lovely sidewalks we have in Newburyport in the dark.
Any other comments? Yeah, well, those public comments. Uh, that's the board. Any other discussion?
Oh, only to hear from all the agencies. It's like I've got the notes since we were waiting for them.
Yeah, sorry. There's no updated comments and we're actually not aware of any updated issues on the.
Any other discuss? I I have one, one question for Mr. Brown. Can't let, can't let you off the hook. You could be disappointed if I didn't. I'm I'm just wondering in, this is a hypothetical question. Wondering in, in your early study, um, given, given how many things need to happen on the south side of the building, could you ever consider flipping the main entrance to the north side of the building? So that cars could enter on the south side, people. I'm just curious.
Yeah, we, in the beginning, we looked at a number of configurations, just trying to sort of like, we started with trying to sort of see to maximize the amount of parking that we can get on the site. So, yeah, we looked at maintaining sort of like the driver app and also making the main entrance, you know, on the north side of the building. And, um, it's significantly tighter that side, you know, between the building and property line. And, you know, that's what we have most creative challenges for. So for a number of reasons, we sort of abandoned that and really thought, you know, locating this driveway, uh, on the south side of the building is really the best thing for the project. So to answer your question is yes, we did look at that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And our challenges.
I assume you did.
Including getting up, you know, it's a lower level, including getting up to the first floor. You know, there's three and a half feet of grade change from one side. So in terms of trying to make the building accessible.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments? Uh, if not, a we can move to discussing a motion. Uh, I will say that we need to separate special permit from the site plan. Uh, so there will be, um, we will get to a vote that will include our associate members or the special um, and the board members. So I will, I will entertain a vote.
Just to clarify, the, the motions for special permits for the non-conformities.
Non-conformity. Downtown.
So there's no. There's no, nothing about this, this except the site plan. Basically, we get to that. When we separate the votes, I'm thinking of the friendliness, do we, do we, can we have a simple vote on the two special permits? And if there are any modifications to the site, they can be addressed. Such as lowering the fence.
Yeah.
So in that case, I would like to make a motion to approve the DOE special permit, special permit for non-conformities, submitted to one oh five State Street, incorporation of the approved unit conditions, et cetera. As provided by the planning development into the board's decisions for it.
Second,
we'll do, uh, we have everybody here, so we can do this by a show of hands. All those in favor? Proved. Comments are approved. And then last motion related to site.
I can make a motion to approve the site plan review application. It's within that.
I did take note of the.
Can we?
Some of the items that you noted.
Let's go through it. Let's go through it. Only a second.
I'll second. Um, we have the granted ban. Granted ban. Right parking space number twelve.
We'd like to to include it. Either to remove the fence or lower to repeat or the.
They separate them.
One more. On the right way.
Okay, so we have a motion. The amendment. Uh, it's again, show of hands, no associate thoughts on this one. All those in favor? Proved.
Thank you very much.
And it's clear you guys spent a lot of work.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the second. We're gonna do your results.
Uh, John Harden. I mean, due twenty-four, Congress Street. So chairman and board, thanks for having us here. This should be substantially less complicated conversation. We are proposing to to bring new restaurant and retail business to Newburyport. We're going to convert an existing office space, space, uh, in the waterfront area. Get it directly behind the blacktop. Um, to this new restaurant space, creating more activity to the area, uh, more of a traffic. It's it's right off of, uh, the, uh, parking lot down by the waterfront. Directly kind of adjacent to Port Cities, uh, same show. That's where that is at this one. Um, so it's just around the corner from there, uh, in the pictures that you see here. It's in the, it's mostly in the taller building to the back. Uh, and it comes into, there's a small portion of it that comes into this two-story space, uh, in the, in this front portion. So if there's maybe a picture but the next one now is probably the best one to, so not that one, uh, to open there. So then our new front door is in this larger piece of storefront. Uh, we're proposing to to add a door to that storefront. Uh, as part of the improvements and, um, and most of what you see on the ground floor here in this image is, uh, is where this new restaurant is basically. The restaurant, the different than any else here, we focused on, uh, high tea. Uh, anybody knows what that is? We've done a lot of explaining, uh, and I should also say Michelle Yak. Um, my wife, uh, is here with me too, and she's the owner and visionary for this, uh, space. Uh, we've been promoting it, um, probably for almost a year now, uh, given looking for a space. We had a pop-up downtown, uh, in one of the Chamber of Commerce's, uh, sheds, uh, right next to the Interring Church on Pleasant Street, uh, over the course of the summer. Uh, so doing a lot of, uh, a lot of reach, a lot of really good positive feedback all around. Uh, the only complexity that we really have with this space is, uh, that it's a chain of use and our art requirement is slightly higher than the existing use. Uh, so we're here today to ask for relief related to, um, a special permit for the T I of, uh, payment and loop. As it stands now, uh, and I know that the the other, a nice, uh, format of the calculations, uh, which has been set up by the Design Administrator, uh, there is, uh, two different spaces. Um, so there's a space in the, in the taller portion of the building you see here. Um, that whole ground floor is about twenty-five hundred square feet, uh, for that office space. And then there's a, a second space that will be taking over about six hundred square feet that's in the, in the short porch building. We're getting those spaces at different times based on these signals, uh, when they're available. Uh, so in doing the improvements of the, the wider space, we're able to, to not have to ask for any sort of relief. Uh, I mean, we're hoping to be able to start construction a little bit sooner than, than when we have a second space. Once we have a second space, we'll have the ability to have, have like a party space and some additional seating in that area. Uh, and that's what triggered us to take over the overall actual. Um, so we're proposing in total, uh, forty-nine or forty-nine seats inside of the restaurant. There's a chance that we may start at forty-one, which would stay in compliance. Uh, so we want to talk about how that works with relation to any, uh, rule, uh, here tonight. But if all in, uh, the space twenty-five hundred square feet at three hundred square feet, uh, for office space is eight point three three spaces. We're proposing thirty-three seats in that first phase, uh, four seats per space. It's eight point two five spaces. So we're just under underneath, uh, the existing parking requirement, um, that exists for that space today. Uh, when we do the addition, uh, expansion in the with the six hundred square foot, uh, second office space, uh, that's three hundred square feet. So there's two spaces there. Uh, will we needing, uh, just over, or or just above four spaces for that? I think that explains kind of what we're here to talk about today, to, to talk about. Our intent for the space. We're excited for it. I think it's gonna be a, a great draw into the waterfront and enhancing the, that pedestrian area there. But that will open it up.
So just one, one question. So the, the main entrance to the, to the facility is gonna be in the, the three-story building?
It'll be up in that bigger piece of block.
Right.
And that's right now, that's a single piece of, it's a window storefront and we're gonna have doors.
Chair. Okay, that's a good, didn't want to just jump in then. Just clarifying, so they did, I think, my first question was just clarification, mention a new door, just one other thing. In that. Yeah, the door location on the exterior building.
And we are not gonna down. In this location.
Oh, I understood. I'm just saying with the sensitivity, we consider it our downtown area, it's going to be the.
Yes.
Um, the other thing I just want to clarify, just so we can just say, it sounds like you're, um, I don't know, you may have talked about this. It says you want the board to must be granted the approval for a base in payment, the I T F proportional to the number of seats you're adding as opposed to all at once. If that.
Yes, I I guess that's, uh, probably a good way of saying it. There's a chance that we go in with forty-one seats and we leave a, a table out of, out of, leave a table that seats eight people. We, we may or may not start that, uh, in the space. If we don't have that table, we actually don't need a special permit. So we would, we'd love to be granted a special permit with the opportunity that as soon as we want to bring that table in, we talk to the town about that and we make a payment out. As opposed to have a start of a building permit, where it might not. It might, it may be within twelve months, uh, but.
Just to clarify, so looking at the plan, you've got the, the big space, the small, the smaller space in the, in the short.
Yes.
Are you saying that if you didn't put those eight seats in that table, that smaller space you don't require an I T F? And and those, those four, the eight seats require how many spaces?
Two.
Two.
The two spaces that we're.
Is, is there a schedule for expanding into the additional space?
Uh, that space should be available to us by the end of the year. Uh, we're looking to start construction, uh, on the first half. Or that, we're building out a whole new kitchen. Uh, so there's a lot of work in the, the construction time is about three months. So our intent is to open this, uh, this space, um, the end of January, early February of next year. So it's like the second piece, it's a pretty small piece, the, the work to be done there is, is quick.
I'm imagining, I guess, I'm wondering if, if it makes sense for you to come back and ask for the two parking spaces when you have some certainty about what's happening and you're ready to move forward with the thing. Right now, you're asking us for two spaces, which I guess we're happy to do, but you, you actually don't have seats adjusted by that.
Well, in our fault, we do have a season and it could be that we move forward with the forty-nine, uh, as a day one. We're just trying to, uh, be there. Should, I guess what we're trying to say is, uh, we don't want pay into the, the I T F funded. We aren't going to have the seats funded one, but we absolutely do want to pay into it by the time we're ready to add that table to the space.
Sounds like they're being.
Might be a good. This is a very.
Economies of scale.
It's very unusual because what's actually creating the I T F, yeah, has nothing to do with the golf. It has to do with each put in.
Yes.
So it's, I guess it seems to me we could be. Grab the special permit and then it'll be after the zone, it would be up to.
Yes, yes. We may straighten, but just deal with that setup and.
So, but the way that the decision will be written, the beyond forty-one, only four, after, after forty-one seats. And even before, before you add another seat beyond forty-one seats.
Yes. Be exactly.
So we could actually make this a much longer video. I could see spending a lot of time.
I think it's kind of exciting that this in there was use of that space. I've seen these guys downtown, tried out the items. They're fantastic. So I think they're it's just a nice way to welcome the business.
Okay. Um, any other questions? John, I'd last for a motion.
We need to, I need to open the public hearing. Motion.
Just, I'm just curious, uh, that was a financial advisory firm and that's been amazing.
They're ready to notice.
Oh, wow. Now we have to open the public hearing.
Although oddly enough, it looks like we don't have anybody either on the road or in. Any.
Close the public.
Make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve. The ITI of special permits in the podium of Merrick Street. With incorporation of draft findings and special conditions reviewed united by the Office of Development into the board's decisions accordingly. With the I say with the provision, the. Payment shall be deposited because it said you said the the actual draft condition says prior to building. Yeah, so so prior to the addition.
All second.
And our associates can vote on this special permit.
Thank you very much.
I did not have.
I didn't see these. So we'll push that off.
Yeah, I appreciate Jane having what they here. Jane from the Resilience Committee. Sorry, you you forget sometimes. You may not all know each other.
No.
Jane is the chair of the Resilience Committee. We've had for a couple of years now. Long term sustainability and resilience in the city and what we wanted to just discuss. Do not like these tonight, but just briefly, I think I'll look for you and Jane, but. Just to show you briefly what we have sketched out on the website as a possible form that folks could fill. I think we were awesome as well. The idea here, just as context, was that we try to get people to think about these things in plans that are submitted. Just as a background, for city projects. We are already thinking about those two. More natural, things like. So we're taking a council. So so. In this case, okay, worth it. So their discussion was generally speaking that Jane jumped in here, we want. The idea here was the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, like people to incorporate this as a checklist. Essentially, and so the idea here was to get feedback from you as a board as we do the Conservation Commission meetings. Of this this sketch out form, just see, do you think it would be helpful in this? We should modify in some way. Is it something that could be used as a tool for applicants prior to an application? Or and then there might be, you know, coaching or things you want to do that are tied into this first stuff. The idea here, I think, was to at least at a bare minimum, get people to be thinking about these things in addition when they're. These types of measures thinking. So with that, I guess I want to perfect Jane on that. Show those like.
Um, no, I think we really just, you know, when we were thinking, talking about this back and forth, back and forth, the Resilience Committee. Like, how can we raise profile of these issues? And so as Andy said, like, well, education, you know, is number one. And so we thought, okay, this is a tool that won't be to owners. Last about, you'll see it or haven't checked it out. If you haven't been able to check it out. Not sure what information we have, but you know, is this property in a future flood zone? Head top? Yes, it is. Or what are you doing to ameliorate maybe the effects of increasing temperatures? And but not only are we asking questions, but you'll see that we're actually providing some answers as well. So it's sort of a friendly, we're hoping to be, you know, non, you know, pretty easy back and forth. So that it's educational and also we're getting that information for whatever.
Yeah, and since you're representing it, obviously you don't have any feedback to it. Just to be clear, I'm just going to show you where is the website. So you can look at yourself. This is an open go. If you go down to the very bottom, that probably. So if we're going to do that, it should be. Start by that. So let's say you're in there, you want to just filling out some of your basic information. This is kind of. How this is rolled out, though, that's part of the universal question and dialogue that we wanted to have to do. So you might be searching for a big address, right? So. Merrick Street and you know, it's going to populate, you know, some of this by the way. It's a basic equation, it's such an equation, you gotta guess. You're going to go on to next. We can put additional instructions here, by the way, and one of the things that isn't the time to do here and it's one of the things that. Whether this tool or. Is to have cross links to definitions, background information, you know. So it's got some links to some basic information like that. It could be helpful in those. Do that, but the valid application of permits, we try to, you know, cluttering things to try. Make the process easier and clear for everybody. You just see that. So here there's just. So then you get started in a less specific, right? It's sealed rise, you know. Community, there's back information that can be given to folks. Now, the GIS is. Your application, which is basically inflated. So here it's, you know, it came in the. See some additional.
So Andy is talking there. This is our part where it just make it rather easy. So if they enter their address and then up pops. Here in this.
Right.
Flutter. And they don't have to.
Right. And they would, you know, there's different ways to cross these things, of course, if you're not already aware when you're on. But down here on the bar, but there is the ability for folks also. It's like for the folks to see the simplified projections. So. You'd be able to see that. So it comes down, you know, what we can. It's convenient for them to navigate, but they in effect see these that you said, you know, they.
Andy, can you remind me? There was proposed new flood maps.
They've been finalized, yeah. Yeah, they've been adopted, they've finalized. They did not make any significant changes. But there were a few pieces of change slightly. The books ready. My understanding is maybe like another four years ago, we might see the other files that weren't updated. I we would update that. We basically would. So you you have, you know, the part of this is again, the dialogue that we have, you know, what kind of questions we want to ask, kind of information we expect. Know, understand, based on what they know already or what. Is it a future flood hazard zone, right? There's something we can do automated or. So, yeah.
So we, unlike the existing flood hazard, we can't automate the future flood hazard area, is that?
No, we can automate that as well, the future plan. So we really just for us, we just have to, it might be something that's not up to date ready or we need to roll into it. We can have it both existing flood zones and, you know, distinguish from that the future plan. We want to be quick, more labeled, something. We can do both those layers.
And see, well, I guess in this case, it would seem that if you're in the existing flood hazard area, you're also going to be the future hazard area. So why would you, you know, you know, so to say.
Well, correct. And that's why being that question makes no sense at all in that context there. You can skip over it, right? So again, this is keep in mind, this is not probably the sort of illusion of different variations as we got to this point. This was kind of the cleanest, most logical format that we reached. And so we thought it would make sense to get feedback to do all and make a correct point, which is that something could be automated better or.
I wonder if that that earlier slide that says you're in an existing flood hazard, when you could have both of them. You could say you're in an existing and you're also in the future or you're not in an existing, but you are in the future.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, to your point, it's just that here it isn't automated right now to correctly to show those. But it could basically show both of these here.
I think that would be helpful.
And I would prefer frankly, anything, this is something we've talked about before. I would much prefer in a perfect situation or anything like this, you're actors wise to have automated based on the factual and, you know. Rather than people trying to interpret correctly something because that does not always turn out with correct information. So it doesn't make any sense to rely upon that information if we get automated, you know, as a correct. So to your point, we could flag other things in here as well. That space with that place. And what's the OD permit? So that's. So again, there are some questions we can change, but what I'm asking is questions, but. Then again, this is maybe something you want to, what do you have to come back and get feedback? Meaning, we wanted to take as soon as we're able to the feedback from both of these boards, then certainly. Recognizing that you are the two boards that, you know. And, you know, we couldn't create something like this thing if already application. I would know, by the way, you know, we did have a comment, we wanted to see the Council of Conservation Commission who had personally concerned. I think we just wanted to make sure that one of the cops might be sort of ignore sort of active changes and bite back. But just as an understanding, I did discuss the process of communication as a part of the best version. But that was, we explained that meeting, this. But it deserves, because you might need to take some in between, you could take, it's not lengthy, but. You can see some of these particulars in, you know.
Are we commenting on the approach of of these solutions?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked that. Yeah, that's a great question. I, Jen and I had an early practice. I, these are all, you know, great questions for us to be asking. I think we should be, one thing I would love to see. Linking to that, essentially at the end of the day, is the actual standard or criteria that we're using, so in there. So if if we're, you know, for instance, irrespective of the detail. If it was, you know, all new structures that are built, you know, forward, with an attitude, it should be built, you know, at this elevation or outside of this, you know. That's rather have something like that applied very clearly in there than backs off the board to apply upon. If there's other ways of doing it, creating a different provision, but it makes sense to have that piece in there. Confusing that could happen, you know, potentially again, recognizing we're politics reports here and, you know, there could be folks may. Both applicants and the board may be a little bit confused about what they have criteria for versus the questions that are being asked. And then having sort of back and forth about whether there's something to be sort of mandated, whether or not it's going to be part of, you know, threshold standard. So we want to, I think, improve those thresholds, those standards going forward, like any other criteria, you know, especially climate change. Seals rise, they get future flood hazards, you know.
Those are those are cool issues too, right? So you wouldn't want to. Like hard. Everyone knows what parking is, you know, like, I know what you're saying. You need a standard because if you impose something that wasn't built yet. Or was something someone could have jacked and say, hey, it's, I'm figuring picking. Picking me out because I happen to be location. That's like, it's slippery slope.
Yeah, I mean, I guess man is what I'm saying. The difficulty is. Meaning that's the risk of, you know, when you're that happens.
And no question, so I'm saying is there would be people that would much be more learned in civil engineering. For sure, right? We would want to say something that seemed good. Other than a seawall, right?
Yeah.
But have no effect other than expensive seawall.
Agreed, agreed, yeah. And there's a spectrum debate to have there too about, you know, how much time does an applicant put into this? Do they understand everything? She might be a simple engineer who understands lots of these things, you know, you have planners there, let's say architects and this. Doesn't, you know, happen. That's another thing too, you know, what is there a threshold for, you know, action more like this, you know, homeowners. You know, we just need to think about what makes sense.
Hope that. I mean, this this is, this list is a series of odds.
Right.
The hope that. The the broader peer review. With with. Hope this somehow. The appropriate.
I think that's how it should be done. I think that that's a fair discussion though, because of the need to possibly update the regulations. You correct, right? Like for instance, there are a few things like for energy efficiency or things like that that we touch on. You know, we would want to, usually we want to potentially look at the same. These things in the ordinance and say maybe there's a new criteria or threshold that. So maybe the special project. As well, you know, here in a hazardous environment, it's, you know. You should seal the horizon, you. So that's the kind of stuff. Whether or not the educational, because Jane corrected wrong, but there's a thought process here that part of this could be. Rolled out as an educational tool as part of the application project, the answer being, even in some cases. How to get to these better future conditions in these projects and plans.
I should say, just background, there is a document that explains a little bit of each of these for the applicants. So it's not just, oh, you know, asking just without a. But yeah, there's definitely, you know, where power is applied, it it opens up some questions. But we felt like this was, this was a first step. Might as well put it, get feedback.
It's a good idea. I mean, maybe a little bit of training in these flood maps.
Yeah, it makes it difficult. We spent a fair amount of effort trying to make sure that all the planes are shown, you know, in our own GIS also still arrives.
So when we, right now, it points to MIMAP and we have instructions that the link is in live, but automated is way better. But just remember that the pointer and what we're looking for is actually that future flood hazard area of twenty seventy.
Yes.
So so is the thought, and I appreciate the development that went into this, is the thought to eventually. Populated enough and then do a demo for us to say, okay, here's how it. This is how it really works. Here's what it is. Cause I mean, I can comment, it's be nice to ask. This would be a nice link, but that may not push the ball that back on the road.
I mean, we could run a sample sort of project plan, you know, sort of through it, just kind of showing, you know, like those, I think in some ways, I think from my perspective, I would think. If we get any early feedback, even though, because again, we could run like an example of a city project. Through here, but we certainly. You about what we.
Yeah, we'll certainly give that. If I'm saying it's the, it would be hard to know the value until you start. Obviously, and then just a simulation, here's what it does.
So the Conservation Mission and the Planning Board, we also talked about going to builder perhaps. So they can go through it and give us feedback, maybe an attorney, you know, some, a few others that are. You know, that haven't seen it before and get. Exactly. So that it is because should this be adopted in some form? We want it as seamless as possible and and as easy as friendly as possible. And so here's our, we're at our first steps here. And it is pretty much ready to go through if you're able to do the test. The only thing that may change is that future flood. Hazard area right now it points to instructions in MIMAP.
Yep.
Where it will hopefully be automated and as. Where it will hopefully be automated, and as as Rick suggests, perhaps all on the same page, and so that is one less step.
Right, right. They'd be embarrassed. Get ahead with the criteria that can be looked at, and they can't say, hey, this is. New which tools they use to do it, but definitely. This is like. You know, e- especially for those. I'm just saying, you know, from that perspective, this is definitely being rolled out, and it is definitely not consistency across. Have those smaller resources of, you know, communities, they're not going to be as thorough, you know. Should, you know. But it is definitely a way of, you know. Changes to incorporate these things.
We have, we actually.
We have.
Started this conversation with, um, Boston. Big guy.
I'm trying to recognize.
And Cambridge both had these kind of questionnaires or checklists, um. Much bigger than this, and we kind of boiled it down, boiled it down, boiled it down to where the information we truly wanted. Um, and I won't, I can't name. The town somewhat, a town or city on, um, the North Shore is called. Can't remember which it is. I'm a little embarrassed about that, but yeah, we're not the only one.
Boston and Cambridge have regulations.
Yeah, I believe as, um, my last look, yes, they have. Regulations down with some of this material, um, but the questionnaires go a little bit beyond, and they ask for, we have one space for a narrative, I believe. There's a lot of narrative that Cambridge asks for, for example, that's a year ago, I haven't looked at their, their most recent one. And so it does go beyond the regulation, regulation. And believe, you know, and and more toward informational, educational. Because we're all sort of in the same boat, uh, we're coming from one regulatory environment. We probably need to move on to the next one, but how do we get there? And thinking about, well, let's hold hands instead of.
And that's, they were looking to bigger areas.
One thing that I'm thinking about. How we might use this. We're, we're, we're going to use. Much more. But. Found three places on the map. So what is three Boston? So look at. Three Boston way. That's just an effect of three.
Yeah.
Is in the future. That's one. Another thing is the subdivision we did down, down by Cambridge.
Yeah.
That's another one that we put, we might have. And the third one. I don't know if this is ever coming back to us or not, but. The bottom of Brooklyn Street. They want to put. That's in the future flood hazard too. So if we, you know, these are real life cases. Either have come before us or. It might be interesting to, to look at. Go back and look and see how we would, what we had looked at this. Would the applicant have. You know, we had asked. I think that Brooklyn Street was staying with.
Yeah.
Speaking to Rick's point, uh, as a member of the Resiliency Committee, I'm a real hit at parties. Talking about these issues, and I've heard. Way too many times of friends or, you know, just people I've run into, where like, I didn't realize that I'm, you know, we're in this area, we're in this zone. And so, you know, as a president, you know, I. Want to give folks a heads up. That, that's also. And so those, you know, I don't. It's just, it's kind of surprising when you look at the areas, especially the where it's not necessarily along the river, um, but on the backside. Um, so it's, it's not why, you know, it's not always obvious.
Yeah. I find this really interesting. I have a couple of questions. First of all, like, if you educate someone about the site, whether they're building something new, I think when it's building something new, it's kind of easy to understand. Maybe thinking about everything, but if it's just a renovation, or like the restaurant to my choosing the east zone. Like, what would they do with that information? Does the city provide any help or resources to like, well, now I know this, what do I do? And the second question is, like you mentioned, like, temperature mess, are there things, this is like ninety nine percent flooding, but is there, are there other issues that this is going to address?
The, the second portion of it, yeah, here we are landscaping in stormwater, those are the, that's how we're, we're asking about those. Um, there's a couple other sections, a couple other topics within there. Um, and so, you know, if we went to the instruction sheets, you'll, you'll, you would see sort of what, where those kind of fall in terms of. Um. If it's stormwater management, if it's heat, if it's drought. Um, how those different areas, um, address those, those topics.
Yeah, and then I think to your question, I would say, I think it was mainly to try to show best practices, that if you push up further, putting more resources, you know. But not necessarily, of course, having, of course, this. You sort of qualify to say, here's how you can specifically incorporate fire retention basin in your recycling. Uh, we certainly would, just because of the frequency of we deal with these things. We think this could be working here. But it would be more so to. This, you know, we could see the. Is there any chance, because the real holy grail is for a lot of people. Or they. You like the Dutch and. Is there any hope that this leads to cooperation across multiple properties or across, you know, bigger?
Um, it's part of a larger picture that the Resiliency Committee and Resiliency Committee, you know, Andy's on there, Rick's on there. Um, some of the conservation divisions on there, and so it's, it's really representative. Large part of the efforts from the city, within the city. Um, and so the Resiliency Committee has started looking at best management practices, and once we identify those and vet them, yeah, we're going to put those up. Say, it's not a lot yet, but, uh, we've held public forums on future flood areas and and other resiliency topics. Um. And yeah, and there's more, more work. More work to do.
Just didn't start.
Yeah.
Well, that would say it just be interesting because for. Make sure that there's some.
And if this raises, I don't want this to raise, what are you doing, you know, why, why do we have to do this extra work? But if this raises questions, in some ways, that's going to help that. A lot of what you're talking about. Those coordination, the Resiliency Committee is looking at grants for all that study the entire. Or, you know, the property is on MIMAP, or it's public and private. Um, and hopefully lead to more. A lot of work. Lot to.
A lot of water. So if you folks want, um, because you can get to it. If you want anything from us, just let us know, just if you want to. To do the application of the. Uh, which is how it would work. But if you have any thoughts, you know, so, um, maybe we can take them, you know, next meeting, we take them in the conversation. So just, we're looking at this first.
You have a target date?
Well, we've been working on this for a couple of years, brother.
I didn't say, yeah.
Grab some sandbags. Trying to get ahead of it.
Anyone have any other?
Oh, just clarifying, obviously, the board letter communication to the DVA, that's been heard of it, so. DVA is next expected to discuss the. Burn and also. Point third. I did one more measure to play. Other. Change, uh, because we probably. Circulation, sort of integration, pulling with that, you know, so, so.
So, so just before the last meeting. Sorry, not talking about it. There was more, the two materials. More stuff since then?
Um, yeah, there's not really, they, they largely came back and. They, there was some exchange of additional. Information about, you know, modeling and, you know. At the end of the day, there weren't any, uh, some, you know, substantial changes to the plan, you know, so it has to be see, uh. It's against that, because they had incorporated some of those things that they were, you know, had maybe gone. There is, uh, that was suggested that it makes more sense for them to give it to be the sector. They were. Where to be with the applicant, this is easy and the. And it's like, there we go, because. And, um, they were, the change of the plant itself. As pieces, you know, let's. We know when again, we'll. Uh, I would like that review and this. We can let you guys know about the dates of that meeting, we're not sure exactly today, because the word. Was expecting kind of good. So, uh, right now, they're talking about traffic and only on. So what's. Where it is, probably things include the architect. You know, design review, you know, design review point in addition to whatever else.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Did that?